All right, you're going to call this meeting for order. I'm going to have everyone stand first.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for our many blessings. May I ask that you bless this meeting and the people that attend us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so as many of you know, we had a state audit that we requested because there's some deficiencies, so discrepancies, I should say. So I'm going to read you this statement that we have here on it. "In November 2019, the city of Forsyth found a discrepancy in the daily bookkeeping. They immediately notified the Tannehill County Sheriff's Department office and during the initial investigation, the Board of Alderman passed a resolution requesting the Missouri State Auditor's Office conduct a fraud and corruption audit of the water and sewer utility. The audit was larger in scope than requested and was very educational for city officials and staff. During the process, staff was directed to resources that would assist the city in developing the policies, procedures, and ordinances that will be required to update and improve our operations. The Missouri State Auditor has completed the audit and has published their findings on their website. Their report may be viewed at nicolegallowaycpamode.gov. The city of Forsyth believes protecting public funds is of the utmost importance and made operational changes quickly to improve security. The Board of Alderman will continue to work with law enforcement officers, officials, regarding criminal prosecution and take necessary actions to obtain restitution. Additional written policies, procedures, and ordinances to help prevent future incidents are being developed and will be implemented in the near future." I love that sound. All right, here's our number two here is the annual audit report.
I don't believe Madison is here yet. She's coming from Springfield.
Okay, so we'll just skip on. Okay, so number three is the proclamation. This KCNQ2 Awareness Week. The city has, is declaring. Let's see, I'm going to read this. Whereas proclamation, whereas KCNQ2 Epilepsy Cure Alliance established KCNQ2 Awareness Week in 2015 and continues to be an annual event. And whereas KCNQ2 Awareness Week is an important platform to elevate the message of need and hope for everyone touched by the condition. And whereas KCNQ2 Awareness Week is claimed, is claimed aimed at raising awareness, education, and advocacy for the international community affected by KCNQ2 epilepsy. And whereas we have come so far in the past few years from a small community of passionate families to a vibrant community driving important precision medicine initiatives for our uncommon disease and whereas much remains to be done. And the KCNQ2 Cure Alliance relies on contributions of the entire community. Whereas the city of Forsyth, Missouri, supports the efforts of the KCNQ2 Cure Alliance and now therefore I, Kelly Gorty, Mayor of the city of Forsyth, Missouri, do hereby define March 1st through March 7th, 2021 as KCNQ2 Awareness Week." And we have a beautiful guy, lady.
I'd like to introduce you to Cammie Cook and her husband Jess is the parents of Ms. Ella. She runs KCNQ2. And then her grandparents are local business owners and Melanie is the treasurer at Tannehill County. That's the grandparents. So we'd like to introduce you to Ms. Ella. This is who we're doing this with.
Hi, sweetheart. Can you say thank you? Say thank you. Good job.
Thank you. We appreciate it so much. Absolutely, and we just want you to know the amazing steps you've taken to, as a family, to get little Miss Ella where she is today.
We appreciate it.
Amazing.
You're amazing parents.
Thank you. Are you saying thank you? Good job.
You're so sweet. We appreciate this so much. I think we shared the whole KCNQ2 community and they all were like, this was kind of a challenge for us to do. We're the only ones that got it done. And so next year, they're all like already in place getting their communities to get it done.
That's amazing.
We appreciate it. Well, we really appreciate too you sharing your story all along the way, that we could all be part of it. So thank you.
Thank you. Say thanks.
Thank you, Ella.
Oh, good job. Say thanks, Chris.
Oh, that's all right, that's right there.
She comes by that naturally.
All right.
Thanks for bringing her, guys.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night, Ella.
Okay, number four. Discuss the mask ordinance.
Our totals on, we've got them right in front of us, on COVID right now are below or at 1.5%. We feel like when we put the ordinance in place, our totals were about 23%. The people had it. Now we're down to a point that in discussion, we haven't voted on it, but in discussion, we feel like it should be left up to the individuals at this point. The people are wearing masks. A lot of them will keep wearing masks. Those that haven't avoided by the proclamation in the past are going to keep going without a mask.
We haven't issued a single ticket, just so you're aware. We, this was put into place to protect the majority of the population of Forsyth and those that come to Forsyth. And so we followed the roadmap to recovery that Tannehill County has put out. And in that continuation, we are basically at phase three post-pandemic because of the numbers, and I'm going to read the numbers to you. As of the week of January 31st, was the first week we went under 10%. We are at 9.8. The February 7th, 8.4. February 14th, 6.5. February 21st, 7.1. February 28th, 4.80. And as of March 7th, we were at 1.50%. So in the Tannehill County post-pandemic, it says de-escalation of cases of COVID-19 and ILI to be defined as averaging over the previous seven days no more than 10% of Tannehill County or Tannehill County footprint. Tests resulting in positive or effective vaccine approved and being administered or effective treatment development that minimizes acute cases and hospitalization of COVID-19 patients. I can tell you it is rather soon that, well, the tent came down at Cox and the MTU is about to close up too. And so I feel and most of this board feels that it is now time to leave it to the individual and to the individual businesses. So that's what we are going to do. That I am recommending. They have to vote on it.
I make a motion that we rescind the mask ordinance. As effective immediately, I would say. Second, Dan.
Like graduation.
Yeah.
You have to read it twice and it's okay, let's see. Okay, great motion.
I would make a motion that we have a first reading by title only on bill number 535.
I second that motion.
Cheryl?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, here it is. Board of Alderman, City of Forsyth, Missouri, ordinance repealing ordinance number 526, face covering ordinance due to COVID-19 outbreak. Whereas on July 20th, 2020, the Board of Alderman enacted ordinance number 526.
Okay. Is that the title? Do we need to approve that?
Oh, I have to read the whole thing? Okay, I thought you said that before, so, okay. Whereas the Board of Alderman determined that the face covering ordinance is no longer necessary, now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Alderman of the city of Forsyth, Missouri as follows. Ordinance number 526 enacted on July 20th, 2020 is hereby repealed. The provisions of this ordinance shall be effective immediately upon adoption. The first reading occurred on March 15th, 2021. Second reading occurred on March 15th, 2021. Adopted and approved by the Board of Alderman at a regular meeting on March 15th, 2021 at the City Hall in Forsyth, Missouri.
I would move that we accept the first reading of bill number 535 by its entirety.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second reading.
I would make a motion for the second reading and enactment of bill number 535. Second, Dan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board of Alderman, City of Forsyth, Missouri, ordinance repealing ordinance number 526, face covering ordinance due to COVID-19 coronavirus outbreak. Whereas on July 20th, 2020, the Board of Alderman enacted ordinance number 526, whereas the Board of Alderman determines that the face covering ordinance is no longer necessary. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Alderman of the city of Forsyth, Missouri as follows. Ordinance number 526 enacted on July 20th, 2020 is hereby repealed. The provisions of the ordinance shall be effective immediately upon adoption. The first reading occurred on March 15th, 2021. The second reading occurred on March 15th, 2021. Adopted and approved by Board of Alderman at a regular meeting held on March 15th, 2021 at the City Hall in Forsyth, Missouri.
Motion to approve second reading of bill number 535 and enact.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Now, does this... Are we removing the mask mandate for City Hall?
I think we should leave it up for our staff. If they're comfortable without masks, they may go without. If they're more comfortable with the mask, they could keep it on. We've got the drive-up window for service. We've also got the Plexiglas up and the walk-up window for service. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. No.
I think with the more folks getting the vaccine, I think it's made a huge, huge difference.
Okay. We don't have to vote on that, I don't think. I think it's just a policy. Okay.
Any of the businesses that want the mask ordinance have the ability to require masks in their stores. It's entirely up to them.
Okay. Republic Services Trash Contract Renewal.
Mayor, thank you for giving me up. You need to come.
Good, you all right?
So tonight, I wanted the opportunity to come before you all. Our current contract will be coming up here in the next couple of months for renewal or, yeah. We'd like to option to renew with the city. We did this out a few years back. We were the lowest bid. The current rates with the city are really, you guys have a really good rate for the area. A lot lower than what recent bids have actually come out in the area the last few months. Yeah. Last year, we did not do an increase kind of, you know, with COVID and the attacks that had it on everybody. But at the same time, it did also have an effect on us. We saw trash, you know, increase at the curb about 30% because more people are staying at home, ordering stuff at home, bringing their food home, eating at home. So our disposal costs went up about 30% last year. And that was about the average nationwide. Some areas were probably about 40%, some a little lower. But in our area, we were about 30%. We saw about 32% increase all around in this area. So, which, you know, makes sense with everybody at home nowadays. It has lightened up a little bit, but I don't see it lighting up anytime soon because it's almost become a norm for everybody to eat at home and, you know, pick up and take out at home. You know, school is doing virtual learning, you know, so kids are staying home more often. You know, so we've kind of adapted. With us not doing the increase last year, you know, it's kind of, we've lost a little bit right there in our margins. And, you know, with the renewal this year, I would like to ask for an increase, but I'd like to be able to negotiate that with the city staff, the city manager, with the council's permission. We are looking at 5%, but, you know, we are willing to negotiate with the city on that. I can put together an example sheet here. I've got the CPI for the last few years on the Bureau of Labor Statistics website. And CPI for garbage and trash services in 2019 was, or 2020 was 3.5%. It's 4.4% for 2021. So last year, you know, 2019, your rates were 1168 per home. If we would have done an increase like yearly, we would have went 1208. And if we were to have a 4.4% this year, it'd take it up to 12.61. If we could negotiate, you know, around a 5% increase with staff, I think that we'd be able to get that approved at our level. And that would be 1225 for home, which is a really good rate for trash and recycling. You know, recycle, I don't know how much you guys have seen them recycled, excuse me, in the last couple of years, but there's been a lot of increase in recycle costs as well. Recycling just isn't the value it used to be. Everything that happened in China, the value decreased. However, the cost to have it processed still increased. You know, and we will probably see that continue to go up with minimum wage and changes and stuff like that, so.
Creston, the per cart, additional cart rate of $3, why is it so much higher than?
That was, get ready to get to that. So on top of, our cart costs went up. So for me to go out and buy a cart, you know, five years ago, it was costing about $40 cart. Now it's costing about $72 cart to have it, to buy one and have it shipped.
I'll remind you, you provide one, that's just.
Yeah, we provide one. The first one's included with everybody, an additional cart for someone.
And recycle.
Or, yeah, so. And everybody gets a cart with trash, a cart with recycling. But for an additional trash cart, you know, with the costs that we've seen just for the cart costs alone, you know, now we can take that, spread it up over time. However, with that and the increase in waste, you know, we would ask for a $3 increase on the. But, and another, I'm going, another thing I want to talk to you all about tonight. This is something we actually implemented in the city of Hollister this last year and the city of Ozark and a few other neighboring cities. Every year, you guys have a spring and fall cleanup. So, you know, kind of what we've done though with some of these other cities is made it a little bit easier for residents. Instead of doing the twice a year on a special date occasion, going to a one-time-a-month cleanup. Hollister, we did away with their spring and fall and went to a one-time-a-month where people can set it out on the day that they want to, on their normal trash service day. So if I go out and buy a couch today, I can set it out and I don't have to store it in my garage or in my, until that fall cleanup date. You know, makes it easier for the resident, you know, the people that are storing stuff in their backyard that don't have a garage.
You may not have as many trash, trashy, you know, people are storing stuff because, for six months because they don't know where to put it.
Yep.
And it's sitting outside their house and in their yards and, you know, along the sides of the house and stuff. And I foresee that being a lot less clutter if we could do this more often.
Yeah, and that's how, you know, that's, it's worked great for the cities. We implemented this, Billings, Ozark, Hollister, Stockton, where it's just, it's easier for the resident to get rid of their stuff.
Right.
They don't have to store it up. You know, and then what if you forget about the date? So now you're hanging on to it till the next spring cleanup date. So, you know, and it makes it easier on our drivers as well because now we're not trying to put multiple people in town and trying to get, because you don't know how much is going to end up out at the curb. And this sometimes also, I'll tell you, one of our, most problem cities was actually Ozark where we ended up with a lot of trash from outside the community showing up at, you know, on the curb.
Yeah.
You know, you pull up and you see a big old pile of trash at a stop sign or at empty houses that were for rent or something like that. Somebody would drive by and just dump out their TVs or whatever. So it kind of prevented them from, you know, utilize that service from the city and dumping stuff on the city.
So you're including this in your cost, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I think that's, to me, that's doable.
To me, that's a good deal.
Huh?
That's a good deal.
I think so too. Yeah.
What do we need to do? Allow him to negotiate?
Yep. So, yes. So.
Up to, but not over the 5% Chris.
Okay. Well, you know me.
That's why I said.
You sell cars. I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
That's why you're here, I don't want to call you up. Recently, we had some incidents with trucks and some wires hanging down. I know that the cables are hanging down. Most of the time, they have to be a certain height. It's on the cable company. My concern was this particular resident had his entire service jerked off the side of his house. If he wasn't able to put that back, do you have resources available to you to help this man out before your insurance would settle on that and not leave him without electricity for two, three weeks, whatever it takes for the insurance to settle it? That's my concern.
Hey, I think we could. So that's a question I really couldn't answer myself to say yes or no because, you know, but most likely, yes. You know, we've always taken care of our communities that we've serviced, you know, and the residents in it. In that instance, you know, I've, I'm actually, I know Liberty Utilities is one of the managers over there, my paylord. I've been communicating with them on that too and about some other wires in town. So, you know, we had one wire that was our driver's fault. But, you know, and we've had, you know, generally electric wires, we don't have a problem with cable wires are usually our most common. Somebody sets a new cable and the cable company doesn't set it at the right height and usually contacting the cable company fights sometimes.
That's my only concern, if he wasn't able to get his electricity back. I just didn't want the resident going without.
And I actually, I stayed out there with that gentleman that afternoon. Came up there, see, I all went back out there and checked on him.
Very good.
You know.
Okay, I don't have anything else.
Well, Chris, you've done us a good service.
Yeah.
I don't have any objection to continuing this good service.
I appreciate that. We've, I've enjoyed having a relationship with you guys for, gosh, I've been with the company for 18 years and I think I've been on my position for probably close to 12 years working with the city, so it's been great working with everyone here, even Chris.
Well, I have the best trash man in the world, so.
He watches and he knows when I haven't got it out.
When he comes, swings back around. Well, yeah, he's coming back around anyway. And he stops and waits for me to get it on the other side, so. He's a great guy.
Darren's a great driver.
Yes, he is.
He's been with us for a lot, I think he's been with us about as long as I have.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Thank you very much for coming and explaining this to us.
Yes, thank you.
I'll share.
Britain?
I am so sorry, shy.
I would. Yes.
Well, guys, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, appreciate it.
See you next week.
I will.
Okay. First and second reading of bill number 533, recreational vehicle regulations. Does anybody want to tell us what's changed in this?
Section 2, subsection 3, removing one word, the word use. Subsection, or section 1, subsection 2 says a person, if he may keep, maintain, or use a recreational vehicle. That language was duplicated in 3, which is actually a prohibition. Can't use it for habitation, so.
Okay. All right. I need a motion.
Make a motion, the first reading of bill number 533, recreational vehicle regulations, by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Bill number 533, Board of Alderman, City of Forsyth, amend ordinance amending section 50405.020 and section 405.030 of the city code.
Motion to approve a pre-first reading of bill number 533 by title only.
Second, the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion for the second reading of bill number 533 and enactment of a recreational vehicle regulation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Board of Alderman, City of Forsyth, Missouri, bill number 533, amend ordinance amending section 405.020 and section 405.030 of the city code.
Motion to approve and enact.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, first and second reading of bill number 534, water and sewer rate increase.
Angela and I have got together, like we do each year, and look at the water and sewer rates and make sure that we are in front of the eight ball, not behind it. And so this is the raise that we've come up with staying in good graces with the power auditors and state statutes.
Okay.
Angela will explain to you how much it will add to an actual bill.
Okay.
DNR designates an average residential customer as a 5,000 gallon user. And the net increase on water is $3 per year. The net increase on sewer is $3 per year. increase on water is $3 per year, the net increase on sewer is $3 per year. The part where it becomes very expensive is for some of our commercial customers. 150,000 gallons is quite a bit of water, but it doesn't even come close to say where the nursing home usage is, but, most of the other businesses are well below 150,000 gallons a month. Their net increase on water would be $90, and the same on sewer. So it's a, that's for a year, not for a month.
Yeah.
So it's, I think it works out to a one, one and a half percent increase over all categories.
And we're just trying to stay in front of Liberty's, you know, they, they have pretty much a yearly raise on their electric service, so, it's what it costs to operate these pumps, so, by state statute, we can't lose money, break even or make money, so.
Right.
We don't, don't want to get, don't want to get there.
Yeah.
Scott? I think, in years past, several years, the city did not raise rates for an extended period of time, and they had to make a significant rate increase to cover the cost. What we're looking at now is five cent raise on the base rate for water, and a five cent raise, base rate for sewer. So we don't have to come in and say, okay, we've got to raise it 75 cents, guys, because we haven't done it annually.
And I can speak, like Jack, Jack was referring to, David auditor mentioned, you know, 10, 15 years ago about doing increases, and yes, I understand, but we've got a pretty healthy budget right now, but right now, it is not the time to hit the businesses or residents. A lot of businesses are down big money, a lot of residents, their income's affected. Yes, this doesn't seem a lot, but when you start acting 90, $100 a month, when I'm already down $400 a, a week at the laundry, you know, it's just not the time to hit your businesses. I understand that you need to keep it up to the eight ball, you know, keep ahead of the, like you said, the eight ball, and just, you know, keep a budget, but you've got a pretty strong budget, I just do not think it's time to enact these, you know, look at it once things get back, crank it up. I've never really fought the increases, I haven't been happy with some of them, because it's been, after they put them in the line, to say, hey, we got to get in line, it's been an increase every year since then, we're damn close to it, and it just, it's really just not the time for, for these businesses, there's a lot of people hurting businesses here.
It's a small increase, so we don't have to do a big increase and take the heat from that, so we're trying to, it's a lot easier to come up with a nickel than it is with 75 dollars.
But, and you're right, Chris, next Liberty is jackalicious, and then everybody else, and everybody else. I mean, it's, it's almost borderline, I mean, you know, just watch the political nature, if they didn't have $15 of minimum wage, you're going to see places close, because you just can't pay them, that's all another shit. But yes, 90 dollars here, Liberty increases, all of a sudden, I'm down another 500 a month, and I'm already down a quarter. I just, I just don't think it's really the time. You can revisit it later, when things get healthier, I'll be in support of it, but it's just not right time.
Well, we, can we take the loss? If, I mean, Liberty is going up, or it's going to cost more for the pumps to pump water, are we going to be, are we going to take a loss?
It's not really time for us to take the loss either, you know, it's just, it's going to hit people even worse when you do play the catch-up, which years ago, that's what they were doing, they were trying to, trying, trying to appease people by not giving one, not giving one, not giving one, wow, this is a crazy increase, so we're just trying to keep that down. And I realize, Scott's a businessman, he's got to look at his bottom dollar, but we've got a lot of other people out here on fixed income, that, that, you know, a big raise would, would affect, you know, a nickel or one.
But since that, it's been steadily increased for at least 10 years, you've done it, haven't you?
I think that was...
We're just following.
At the time we did it, that was the intent.
Sure.
To, to do these, little increases every year.
And I was still for them, I agree with that, but we're just, I mean, how much, really, look at what your budget, can you, you know, can you afford if you lost two towers all of a sudden, God forbid, we get a tornado from here, and it takes out two water towers, can you cover that? Do you have the reserves? If you've got the reserves, don't hit the increase. If you're hurt that bad, you're going to have to prove it to me, because it looks pretty healthy, I mean...
Tax dollars down still?
Tax dollars are level, but tax dollars don't apply to your proprietary fund, your business that you're running with the water sewer. Just the increase in what Liberty's going to do to us this year is about $6,400. This increase will almost generate that, almost, but that doesn't include the other costs that go up, health insurance, 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 supplies and materials, the cost of bringing in electricians to do work that we are not qualified to do, and things like that, so it's, um...
It's not going to put us way up there, it's just staying within grasp of not getting behind, and having to get this big increase, which, there'd be a lot more people show up stomping their feet.
Well, personally, as a homeowner, I would personally rather see five, five cents, and then I would, to, you know, and come in, hit us in a few years with a very large increase, and wonder what the heck is going on, and so, I'm just saying for personally, but I don't vote, so, it's up to, and I agree with, I mean, the elderly, they are on fixed incomes, and they can't take a great big hit either, at the, all at once, so, gradual.
What if we, I think Scott's got a point, to agree, what if we postpone this, say, for three months, we've got rid of the mask ordinance, maybe business will pick back up, and be looking at the same nickel in three months from now? Because I think the restaurant business is going to go up, your business will probably go up, mask ordinance being deleted might help that, but on the other hand, you have to understand that our income is down too, because the city's income is down.
Sure, I'm aware of that.
We've still, we've still got to pay our bills, we don't have a big resource that we can lean on.
No problem, and I think that's fair, I mean, let's recover with it, but then, yeah, like I said, I don't think it's unnecessary, I mean, I'm not trying to down this thing, it's just not the right time, you know, three, six months, look at it, and then turn around and tack it in. So then you took, you know, cornered numbers, basically of Liberty, and that's going to be a couple, I don't know, what, a month, two months away, if it's going to be $6,500 to, let's say, a year, and, so you're looking at, if you hold off for six months, you're $3,000, then you might lose paying the pump out that you don't recover with the increase, so is it, is that a good faith, for the businesses and the systems? If you guys, you know, might lose $3,000 on the increase, I think that's, that's a nice gesture, I think.
Is it something that we could go ahead and vote on and make it effective at a certain time period, instead of making it effective immediately, or with the April billing?
It'd be the same thing.
Yeah, and that way we'd have it pretty much settled, so we wouldn't be going back over the same arguments.
So you're making it effective in three months?
I think, you guys agree with that?
I'm just going with what, I, I'm going with what the experts here are saying, so no, I don't agree with that, but I'll get out on it.
What if we pretend making it, um, okay, this would be effective actually to April billing, is that what we'd be looking at, which basically is your use through March, right?
It'll be your use March 15th to April 15th.
Okay, March 15th to April 15th, okay. So, what if we did a compromise and did it June 15th, you know, that would be two months, that, that should help a bit.
Same time, and...
What?
No, I haven't even, no. Okay. Need a second to read the first reading of the title only?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Bill number 534, Board of Aldermen, City of Forsyth, Missouri, and ordinance establishing potable drinking water and sanitary sewer fees, and establishing deposits for utility services.
Motion to approve the first reading? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, and, need a motion for the...
Motion for the second reading of bill number 535.
534.
534, by title only, and enactment. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Board of Aldermen, bill, oh, sorry, bill number 534, Board of Aldermen, City of Forsyth, Missouri, and ordinance establishing potable drinking water and sanitary sewer fees, and establishing deposits for utility services.
Motion to approve second reading of bill number 534 and to enact.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Do we get a motion for the June 15th? Did we get, uh, to enact that?
Enact that effective the June billing.
The June billing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, huh? Yeah, we need to, uh...
Motion to enact that change to bill number 534 with the June billing of the water and sewer system.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Another question, on the mask forms, sorry, on the mask ordinance, is there occupation limits still in place?
No.
I didn't discuss that.
It's been tied up to the businesses.
It is up to the businesses.
Excellent, excellent, all right, it ain't here to occupy.
Yeah, you are correct, we didn't, we did not tap on that, but that was part of that phase three of the Tannehill County, is to re, to get back to normal.
All right.
So, okay. Okay, approve banking and audit services.
The deadline to turn in a submittal was March 5th. The audit is easy, but not easy, we've had one submission from our current auditor, we're basically the only firm in the area who is doing governmental audits. The cost is $31,200 over the three-year period of the proposal, and that is about a 46% increase over the current contract.
What percentage?
46. It's not critical that we make a decision at this meeting, as the audit year ending is not till August 31st, so if you want to think about it before we go ahead and accept the price, you can do that.
I think we want to table it for the present time.
I do, too.
It's too much increase.
That is, that's way too much increase.
Let's see what we can find, okay? The other were the banking services, we had two submittals and one declination, the Branson Bank and Southern Bank both submitted, and I've summarized their interest rate offerings here. We've probably talked about this before, but interest rates in the world right now are very, very low, and they are not anywhere near what we've been getting for the last three years, so it's kind of a, it's just the way it is. So we don't need to depend on interest in them, thank goodness, but it will be considerably less. Both banks offered a fixed rate and variable rate, the, the variable rates, the, the rate that the rate is based on were different means, but both of those base rates are not really volatile, they don't move a whole lot, if we had a sudden surge of inflation, we might see some movement, but that's not really what either bank has predicted over the, the three-to-five-year window. Additionally, we hold all of our money in checking accounts at this time, and savings accounts, which makes the fixed or the variable rate no difference between the two bids. So, I would prefer to not have to change banks, since it is the same either place. Both offer good service, they're very strong in our community, but I would prefer to stay with Branson Bank, if that's your decision.
Make motion, um, to approve the banking and audit services Angela described, Branson Bank?
No audit.
Just banking.
What?
Just, not audit, just the bank.
Oh, just the bank.
Yeah, the auditor is on the top part of this, uh, so... Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, okay, we'll do that, yeah. Okay, and I need, yeah, the table, the audit, yeah.
Motion to table the audit discussion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, all right.
Now, we need to bank.
No, we did it.
We just did it, that was what we were doing before we did the audit.
I didn't know we got all the way through it.
Yeah, we did. Where are you at? You sleeping over there?
Too much oxygen, that doesn't matter.
I wanted to stain from that, so...
There you go. Okay, I can do that. Well, I didn't, you didn't say, say anything, so...
I didn't get a chance.
No, I was pointing right at you. Ryan, you got any?
We appreciate the city's business, we, we truly don't want to take that responsibility lightly, and just, you know, spend a good partnership for us and the community, and we appreciate working with each of you, so, thank you.
Budget adjustment for six months.
Budget adjustment was carried over from the February non-meeting, it adjusted the buzz, budget for salary increases that were approved after the original budget was approved. The addition of the expenses due to the fire department grant from Conservation Department for radios, police department reduced the patrol officer count to four, we removed the capital project from the sewer sales tax budget, because during this budget year, we're not going to have a project, and then our final budget adjustment, I would expect in July, I think this should be able to get us through, we're holding very tight on our spending.
Motion to approve the budget adjustments.
Okay, second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, approve financial service agreement with Piper Sandler.
Piper Sandler is somewhat of a new name, we talked about, talked, trying to refinance our water sewer bonds at our January meeting, to capitalize on those lower interest rates, and to hopefully stabilize our principal payment amount, beginning this year, our principal payments on those bonds increase $30,000 per year, so that when we issued these bonds, we weighted them a little heavier towards the end, hoping we were catching up on our rates and, and being prepared. And, we can do it, but I think that by refinancing, we will have a savings in interest, according to Piper Sandler's folks, in the neighborhood of $40,000 over those last eight years of this debt, so, we need an agreement with Piper Sandler to allow Todd Goffey to be our municipal advisor, and provide financial opinions to the city, to ensure that we are getting the best deal we can get. to ensure that we are getting the best deal we can get.
Piper Sandler is a rename of Piper Jaffray. And Stone County has used Piper Jaffray since, at least since the early 80s for all of its projects. We've been very happy with it. However, we just learned on our last refinance of the judicial building that regulations now require an annual audit. And if we don't have the, this built into the annual audit, it could be, could be costly. So we need to check that out before we make a decision whether to refinance.
One of the other benefits of having a private placement, which is the, a bank basically buys their bonds...
If we can do that, then we don't have to have the audit.
We're great. Otherwise, there's about 20 hours a year of reports that we give to the federal government, and they post on the Securities and Exchange Commission's website. And we've been doing that, and there's a copy of this year's in your paperwork. And that cuts a little bit of reporting time out, for sure. But Todd Goffey...
So you think we're already covered on, as far as the expenses?
Yes, I believe we're already covered. And Todd Goffey is the gentleman who helped us with the capital improvements bond issued last year.
He's actually...
Yes, he is.
So are we tabling this, then?
Do you see any need for it, Angela?
I don't think so.
Make a motion to approve the financial service agreement with Piper Sandler.
The second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, approve mutual aid agreement with Mo Department of Conservation. Nathan.
In fact, you should have filed the Missouri Conservation Agreement. That allows us to apply for grants through conservation as well as partnership with conservation mutual aid calls or we need them, vice versa. And so I request to be able to sign that document, and I believe that they're changed to an annual agreement, so I'll have to do this each year.
I read through this, this was...
And as well, we can request and go up to Jeff City or, uh, not Jeff City, yeah, Missouri Department of Forestry and get equipment and similar like where we got our brush trucks before and things like that, so...
I make a motion that we go ahead and approve the mutual aid agreement with Missouri Department of Conservation.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you, Nathan.
Okay, Nathan, now approve maintenance contract with Blue Valley Public Safety.
This is our annual contract for maintenance of our outdoor warning system, our fire sirens, outdoor sirens that we have within the city. And annually, they come down and do annual maintenance and checks. And then, but every three years, they change up the barriers that are in each one of them, which is costly if we had to do it on our own. Last year, there was no cost because of some conflict with their schedule, so if you recall, they waived that fee from last year. I look back on the previous contract, and I think it went up like $60 between the last three years.
That's pretty good.
We don't have very much of an option of anyone else to do this, so I would make a motion that we go ahead and approve those.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nathan, I was noticing on the front of the forestry department work, now you can get the title to the vehicles in a year's time instead of waiting for, so that's good news.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Certain vehicles, usually they have two different programs you can acquire. One that basically the vehicle belongs to the US government forever until we want to give it back, and that's what our current brush truck is. So if we ever dispose that, we have to return it back to conservation. Undisposed, we can't sell it outright. Under the, a new program, if we acquire a vehicle through them after a year, once it's in service, and we receive the title to it, and it belongs to the city, so... Especially if you're putting a vehicle in service, and we're putting some money into it when I'm tearing it out the window.
Right.
Yeah, all of them here, though.
All right, approve, approval to support Tannehill County 100 Club.
So you should have in your packet, as well as, I have a brief statement on it. I do have a couple of board members here tonight. I'll invite Mr. Henderson up here, I believe he was the nominated person, spokesperson. If you guys have any questions over that, but... And personally, as well as the department and all emergency services are behind this. I spoke with all the chiefs in Tannehill County. They're, they're for it. You know, in the event that there's a fallen service member, this provides some assistance to the family. And that's most important in a totality in service. There is some state and federal programs out there, but this really doesn't impact the family directly and pretty quickly, too. Pope Chief Forrest and I sat down and had a meeting with a couple of the board members and discussed it, and I believe we can be in favor of it. No cost to the city. They just asked our support and their mission, as well as maybe put a sticker on a vehicle. And I think, Jack, did you see a copy of, did Ford show you a copy of that sticker? He had, Chief Forrest has a sticker, but it's about four or five inches like that. It's not like a big plaque or anything, but it's just another logo and be able to support their mission, so. I'll invite Mr. Henderson up here.
Nothing left. That's what's left.
First things first, I'm not going to ask you for a nickel, okay? Which tends to be a big deal to some folks. My name is JB Henderson. I'm a 25-and-a-half-year veteran of Phoenix, Arizona Police Department. My friend Cory Roba is the actual founder of the Tannehill County 100 Club. They're all over the country, they're individual, they're separate. And as the chief explained, in the event of a fallen firefighter, police officer, and we're going to include EMTs as well because traffic accidents frequently claim them as well, will be there within hours with monies for the survivors to get by until their insurance monies get there. Just something they can do with whatever they want. Is this what you've got?
Yeah.
Yeah, all we're asking for your support, and we can include the City of Forsyth on our website as supporters of the group. And we're going to start fundraising this summer. And, you know, hopefully we'll be the busiest club in the county that never be choose.
That would be great. That would be awesome.
Darren Carter's here, we all know Darren.
Yep, we do.
And Roxanne Robinson. Everybody knows Roxanne on the shirt, too. What a glad and longtime deputy. Any questions?
No, I don't think so.
I think it's wonderful.
Yes. Those are too easy, thank you.
I would make a motion that we approve the support of Tannehill County 100 Club.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
And Nate, I want to thank you and all of your firefighters. You guys have had a rough month.
Yes, yeah.
And we really appreciate everything that you guys have done. I know it's been a rough month.
Good job. You better hang in there, man.
Thank you.
I know. That night down the bottom, when you couldn't get a truck down there and it was freezing, I know you weren't wanting to be there.
Unfortunately, no one got hurt or...
That's, yeah, that was the important thing, so...
Yeah, appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. All right.
Goes on the police car and the fire press.
That would be great, yeah.
Hopefully it stirs something, you can call and say, "Oh, you're doing good."
Good, thank you.
Oh, I like the, the silhouettes there.
Very nice.
Yes, thank you. All right, approval to support Tannehill County, oh, no, I did not, sorry, minutes of January 11th, 2021 to February 25th, 2021.
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Bills for approval.
Motion to approve the bills, um, January the 14th, $39,226.79. January the 21st, $1,653.90. January the 28th, $29,602.23. February the 4th, $39,344.43. February the 11th, $12,302.62. February the 18th, $29,309.47. February the 25th, $3,353.30. March the 4th, $33,104.25. And then March the 11th, $38,626.50. And we don't normally have that many.
Oh, wow, yeah, two months, yeah.
I say, in the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was a lot.
That was a lot. Okay, financial statements, uh, January 31st and February 28th, 2021.
I'm only going to cover February 28th because it is the most recent statement.
Okay.
And in time, if we can get to the cash balances for the month, we are slightly ahead of where we were a year ago, but most of those increases are in our general fund, not our water sewer. And as I mentioned, I also include the annual update for the water sewer bonds in your packets. Just basic information on how user counts have changed, revenues, ups and downs, and basically updated information so that people who buy or want to buy our bonds have the information they need to make the decision. Along with our state audit, we're going to have some new management reports that I'm working on. They want the Board of Aldermen to monitor some items that may or may not have been noticed before. Things that might be considered basic business information. And if you have things that you want to see specifically that we can pull out of the financials, let me know. I'm still building the report, but it's still work in progress right now. So that's, that's where I'm at on that. Your budget amendment will be in your next month's remit and expense report. And then next month, we'll be doing one more bid proposal, which is our insurance renewals. And right now, our property, auto, and more comp options are looking really good. So I will have the final numbers for the April meeting on the insurance.
I made the motion to approve the financial statements as of January 31st, 2021. That's the only one you wanted, right?
Yeah.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approval of transfers from January 14th, 2021 through February 4th, 2021, and February 11th through March 11th, 2021.
Make the motion to approve such transfers?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we can have the press board update.
Easter egg hunt, the 27th?
27th.
27th Easter egg hunt at, we're going at 2:00 up at Scholz Bend Park on Highway 176.
There's 76.
76, yeah. 76. Probably lasts, what, two or three hours, somewhere around there. And we have three age groups, I think, that kids can chase things. We got a few donated prizes.
We do. Branson Family Trucks and the Public Services have donated some bicycles for us. And then we have had a community member donate a bunch of goodies to make up the Easter baskets for the younger group. And then we'll have some, oh, maybe extra prizes. We've got frisbees and some stuffed animals, new stuffed animals, and things that she brought as well, so...
And the Easter buddy will probably be there.
Oh, I reckon.
Yeah.
Can't keep him away.
It's usually a pretty skinny Easter buddy, but...
It is, it's not handy.
Why are you looking at me?
It's nice to be able to have a, an Easter egg hunt this year, I'm just, just saying. So a little bit of normal coming back, it's good.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Greg Doherty for being a wonderful alderman all this time. I personally am going to miss you. Appreciate all your input, all your hard work you helped to the city. I think this is going to be your last meeting, and I also look forward to our new alderman, Dennis Windsor, to work with you in the future. But I just want to say thanks to Greg.
Unfortunately, I'm not going to miss him.
I'm going to catch you when you get home.
I have to live with it.
You gotta live with it.
All right. Well, does anybody have anything else to say?
I'll need to table the annual audit report. She's never going to show up.
Oh, yeah, I don't know what happened to her.
I'll, I'll find out tomorrow.
Okay.
You found the audit report in front of you, however. We didn't receive a clean opinion, and financial statements adjusted to full approval are in there.
So I can go ahead and approve it without her. Well, it didn't matter whether you grew it or not, the report's...
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
It's been delivered.
Huh?
It's been delivered, basically.
We could go ahead and approve it then, right?
Just accept it.
I mean, we're just accepting it, yeah. Okay.
Motion to accept the annual audit report from KPM.
All in favor?
Aye.